I'm gonna send around an email list to sign up. If you're interested in being on my campaign email list, please put your information down. If you realize at the end of the evening that you don't, when you get an email from me, you can just unsubscribe at the bottom. Also, I put up my contact info on the whiteboard over there. Lindsey Schromann Warren, I'm running for Port Angeles City Council Position Number Three. That's a position currently held by Patrick Downey. Just because he's the mayor doesn't mean that I'm running for the mayor's position. That's not how it works for the city. I don't know if anyone else yet is running for Position Three. If you do, please let me know, or when you do, please let me know. My email and phone numbers on the board. I also have a Facebook page set up for my campaign. It's just Lindsey Schromann Warren is the page name for that.
Lindsey, what is your vision for the future of Port Angeles and the Olympic Peninsula? How would you create a vibrant community? How do you create economic revitalization?
Two minutes? So, I think a lot of us, a lot of people move to the peninsula with a lot of intention because this is the place where people come and say, wow, this is beautiful. It's a place where people have intentionally lived for a long time. It's a place where we have a national park in our background and the ocean is an hour or so away and Victoria on the other side. It's a place of tremendous natural beauty. A lot of people intend to be here. A lot of people like myself, we grew up here. I've intentionally come back twice, once after undergrad, once after law school. And it's a place where, you know, I choose to live. And I think that's true for a lot of people. I choose to live here. Not everyone, of course, but for a lot of us. So, my vision for Port Angeles is that it's a place where people can recognize that we're all a community here, that we all need to take care of each other and recognize kind of our shared interdependence here. Also, it's a place where people can all make ends meet in Port Angeles and on the peninsula. And it's not a place where we say, well, sorry, you know, you don't have a job, so, you know, move to the I-5 corridor and maybe I'll get there. And finally, I think it's a place where we learn from and value and take care of the rivers, the streams, the mountains, the forests, the shorelines, the saltwater environments that we live nearby. And that as more people come to the peninsula, which is a larger question of how that happens, but as more people come to the peninsula, that we don't lose the things that people are coming here for, that we don't lose the value that we have as a community in this special place. So, how do you create a vibrant community? Community to me is an emergent property of individual interactions, you know, over time. And so, you know, community is everybody getting to know everyone else as well as, you know, kind of some more intention within that as well when you talk about a vibrant community. So, a city council member can help that in being a leader and reaching across divisions and reaching, you know, into places where it's not necessarily comfortable. A city council, a city council member can also basically help to create an environment where people have more opportunities to come together and interact as a community. But in many ways, the vibrancy of the community is something that's everyone's responsibility. It's not something we specifically look to government for. So, how do you create economic revitalization? I think there's been a lot of effort to like find silver bullets and, you know, one thing that's gonna work and pull Port Angeles back, like the next timber industry that I'll just revitalize it. And that's, that's not gonna happen for us. It's gonna be little thing by little thing, small changes that are gonna create a vibrant economy, our economic revitalization. And for the city, it's the obligation of the city and specifically of the council to create a policy environment and create a long-term plan that helps to make it possible for people to be entrepreneurs here, for people to be small business centers here, for people to bring manufacturing industry here in ways that create actual wealth in the community and don't just kind of siphon that wealth, wealth back off the peninsula. We were talking earlier about how there's a lot of raw log export off the peninsula. And so, there's a lot of natural resources here and then we're just taking that wealth and shipping it away. And that's, that's not gonna help with economic revitalization, but it's gonna help us figure out that value-added product and that value capture real well for people here and how that gets distributed. So, I think I went over my time, I apologize.
That's okay. No problem. Okay, but thank you. Next question, what are the top three issues for our region and how would you develop coalitions within the public to solve them?
Yeah, so there's a lot of issues. I tend to look at things from kind of a systems theory background, like what are the interconnections between the issues and how do they overlap? And then where does changes in one issue affect, affect another issue? So, I was thinking about that question and wrestling with it. And so, here are the three that I, that I'd throw out and feel free to disagree with me. There's all sorts of issues that we could look at. One, I think, is just an issue of democracy. And what does it mean for people to have political power, which is what the word democracy means? And how does our government intersect with society in a way that helps us all to have political power and decision-making in our lives and in our community? We have a, a system right now where we feel divorced from our government. It's like, what's our government doing to us or what, you know, it's not us. You know, because we don't have equality of political decision-making power, we have government and society and we're not really that, you know, connected into our government. Even though our government is supposed to be a democracy, it's supposed to be people power, it's supposed to be us of, by and for the people. So, addressing that is something that takes people on the outside saying, hey, we need more accountability, we need more transparency, we need more open decision-making that actually takes into consideration what people want. And then at the same time, it also takes people in government, whether elected or appointed, you know, staff as well as city council, wanting to see that public participation. Recognizing that more dialogue is better for policymaking because we get more of the perspectives and we get to work through the problems before we create a policy and then say, oh, we didn't consider this other thing and now we have to go back and redo the policy. It also makes it easier to implement the policy because more people have gotten on board. And even though everyone hasn't gotten exactly what they want, people understand why that's the best policy for our community. So, I'm in favor of seeing more open and transparent government in that way. So, a second issue, it's a sustainable economy. So, how do we create an economic system that provides for people now in this place having everything they need to live comfortably and also doesn't detract from people in the future being able to make their ends meet in a comfortable way as well? So, in doing that, you know, I think the ideas that we've talked about in the hour before this interview come into play, that we can't rely on triple-down economics. We need to figure out what produces wealth for people here. You know, I noticed my neighbors are a lot of people who've, well, my new neighbors on my little block in town are people who've moved in but telecommute to large tech companies. And so, that's an area where like, you know, people are bringing wealth to the peninsula by basically bringing their work from somewhere else and living here. We also have, you know, the, the issue of a lot of things that we need locally, we don't produce locally. So, we could do a better job of recognizing where can we produce locally, the things that we're gonna consume here as well. And then there's a lot of incentive to try and figure out who can come here in terms of larger jobs. You know, that, that sometimes ignores the local entrepreneurs who are here now who want to get started, who just need a little bit of credit or need a little bit of guidance in order to be able to start what they wanna do. But in terms of thinking about businesses that come, like manufacturing businesses that come here too, we wanna make sure that we're not setting ourselves up to have a business that is not a good scheme where there's liability left over after the business leaves or after the business goes bankrupt. And who's left with that liability? We're left with that liability. You know, I think, look at ITT Rainier, it's been empty for 20 years. Now it's supposed to get cleaned up fast. And so, we need to avoid doing the schemes that we've done in the past where the government buys out a bad business plan and basically puts the taxpayers or the people on the hook for that later on. So, can I do three? Okay. So, the third one that I wanna address is what I would call inclusion and social responsibility. And this comes about with a few issues that I think are on a lot of people's minds. Locally, it's in the local discussion quite a bit. But that's the intersection of housing, affordable housing, homelessness, mental illness, and drug addiction. And those are different issues, but they intersect in different ways and they're complex issues. And, you know, there's a lot of, of different groups in town trying to address those in different ways. I think we're going to choose in the next couple of years whether to address those issues from a way that recognizes everybody's humanity and recognizes that people here who are less fortunate, that most people are still members of our community, and that looks for solutions that tries to take care of people. Or we may choose to address those issues in a way that says, we wanna push away people who we think as a community are undesirable and make them go somewhere else, get them out of here. We have a choice on which of those two paths to pursue. It might not be totally clear like that, but in the next few years, we're gonna choose which of those paths to address those issues. The city has started to do some work along those lines, like creating changes in the zoning code to allow more accessory dwelling units, which over time will help to improve the affordable housing situation. There's other things with, with drug addictions, folks in other city police have done. But I, I think there's, there's a big question of where are we gonna go as a community? And are we gonna go in a way that recognizes that we wanna be an inclusive community and while we encourage people to take personal responsibility, we also are gonna take social responsibility for our neighbors and the other people in our community? So, that I think would be the third big issue that, that I wanna see. So, then there's the question of developing coalitions within the public to solve them. All of those issues have different groups of people working on them already. So, one of the ways that I would see my role as a city council member is helping to tie those things together in ways that help to move policy and planning forward so that we can start to get down the paths that we wanna get down as a community for working on those issues.
Thank you. How would you develop coalitions within the city council?
I wasn't totally sure what to say about this. You know, one thought is, you know, the city council is required to follow the Open Public Meetings Act, which means that anytime four or more council members, the majority of the council, come together to conduct city business, it needs to be done in an open way. And that's because, as the Open Public Meetings Act says, the, you know, the, the council are public servants. The people do not, you know, lose their authority just because they've, they've chosen representatives in order to carry out the work of the government, in this case, the city government. So, there's a requirement, and it's a good requirement, that the city council, when it's working, you know, with, with four or more, which, you know, four, I guess, could be a coalition, that's kinda why I look at this way, works with the public. And so, you know, when we're talking about coming up with policies, I think it's really beneficial for it to be done in a way that includes city council members, maybe not all of them, maybe a working group of them, that includes members of the public who want to be involved in coming up with ways to improve that issue. And then also involves city staff or other people who are experts in that particular issue. Particularly for city staff, they're the ones who are the, the executive branch, so to speak, of the city and they're the ones who are gonna be implementing policies if the council adopts them. So, it's important to have them in, in the whole planning process for policy. So, I see publicly this need for the council to not just do, you know, what you see at the council meeting, which is, okay, something comes forward, it's voted on, it moves on, but to be involved in kind of a collective planning process of, well, what's gonna be the best policy? And can we make sure that we pull in the stakeholders who have thoughts on this, even though they're not the thoughts that the council members agree with or even city staff agree with, but that are, are people who are gonna be concerned about how that issue goes? Because creating that dialogue is gonna be helpful in coming up with policies that make the most sense for everyone.
What's your view of local politics, specifically the current debate over whether PA should be a, that should be code city or second-class city?
Yeah, so, there's, let's see, so there's three options for a city in Washington law and Port Angeles, Washington law. One is a charter city. And a charter city has its own governing structure, a charter, which is basically a local constitution. And it also has home rule authority, which means that it can do anything unless state law or federal law says it can't do it. So, that's the charter. The second option is what we currently are in Port Angeles, a code city. That's where the structure of government isn't created through the charter, it's created through a section of Washington law, the code. But the code city still has home rule power, meaning it can do whatever it wants to do as long as state law or federal law doesn't say no. And then the third option is a second-class city, which gets its instructions from state law, different section of state law, but doesn't have that home rule power, which means that it can only do what state law has said that it can do. So, one way to look at this is, do we look at state law to say whether we can't do something? That would be the first-class home rules, home, first-class charter city or code city, the two home rule options? Or do we look at state law to say that we can do something? And that would be the second-class city option. Another way to look at it like would be if the state's the parent and the, the city is the child, does the parent say, you can only play in the yard? Or does the parent say, you just can't play in the street? Right? Those are the two different, like, are we looking for the scope of restriction or the scope of authority? So, right now, there's a proposal, it's gotten enough signatures, it presumably will dwell in the November ballot, to change Port Angeles from a code city where it has that home rule authority to changing it to a second-class city where it looks to state law to figure out what the scope of its authority is. And I think that the people of Port Angeles are going to wisely vote that down, vote no and move on with that issue. There's a debate right now among, about the legality of it with regard to whether that change in classification for the city would trigger a reelection of the city council members. So, to make sense of that, we have to look at two different aspects of city structure. One is the classification. Is it a home rule city, I'm sorry, is it a codes, is it a charter city, is it a code city, or is it a second-class city? That's classification. And this proposal is a reclassification. The other structural thing is whether the city has a strong mayor or a weak mayor, or another way to say that is whether it is a council manager's form of government or whether it is a council mayor form of government. The question really is about how is the legislative branch and the executive branch of the city organized and what's the internal division of power within the city? Like, is the mayor in charge of the executive branch, which is the council mayor version? Or is the city manager in charge of the executive branch, which is the council, the council manager version, which we currently have? So, the, the discussion right now, if you go into like the different legal memos that the city has commissioned, is about whether this proposal changes the, the reorganization of the city, whether it changes that internal stuff and thus triggers a new election. And, you know, regardless of the outcome of that, I think the important part for us as looking at the long-term future of the city is, do we wanna give up home rule power? I think the answer is no. We wanna stay as a code city. And if we're gonna change, let's become a charter city, but let's not go back to being a second-class city.
Okay. Last question, what do you-
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
Lindsey, who are the interests that are proposing that changes to a second-class city?
Yeah, so, the proposal was done by Our Water, Our Choice, and it came out of the, it came out of the whole water fluoridation issue, right? So, people in Port Angeles felt like the city council wasn't representing them, particularly after over 56%, I think exactly, of the people who responded to the survey or vote said that they didn't wanna see water fluoridation. City council members dismissed that and continued to go forward with the water fluoridation. And people said, well, then we're gonna change our structure of government because it's not accountable to us.
Okay, got it.
And that's an old tradition in the United States of changing our structure of government when it's not accountable to us. So, you know, there was righteous anger at that point in time. At this point, three of the four council members who were the so-called fluoride four are saying they're not running again. The fourth one is not up for reelection. So, I would say that the need to, you know, basically shake the structure to the ground and rebuild it is no longer there from that perspective. So, vote no and move on.
Okay, thank you. Last question, what do you see as government's participation in our daily lives?
Again, that's like, wow, what's going on there? So, so at the city level, I mean, there's a very tangible, the city provides municipal services. It provides water system, it provides an electric, electric system, it provides a transportation system, it provides an emergency response system. And so, that's a participation level in our daily lives that I think most of us are thankful for. You know, then the question becomes, how much do we wanna increase our sales tax to pay for that and that sort of thing? But, so we have the city as a utility provider, basically as a proprietary, a proprietary corporation but publicly owned, providing those services. And I mean, that's a level of, of participation in our daily lives that's pretty extensive. We then get to the city as something more than just what a private company could provide. The city has a government, right? And so, the city is able to make policy, it's a general-purpose local government, able to do whatever's allowed unless provided, prevented by state law or federal law. So, that's where we get to the questions of what more do we want our local government to do for us? You know, issues around, for example, affordable housing. There's a lot of different policy tools that the city can implement. It started to do some of those or it has been doing some of those. There are still others that other cities have done that we know we could do and we need to decide, is there a political will to make affordable housing a reality here in order to alleviate homelessness issues? And we have the power to do that as a city because it is government. So, I'm not really sure like how much, what do I see as government's participation in our daily lives? Ideally, there's not a separation between government and our daily lives because we are the government. But, you know, that's, that, that ideal is a long way from where we are today. And so, people often look at, well, I don't want government.
But our needs depend on government.
Oh, yes, absolutely, right.
Yeah, our needs depend on government. And at the same time, we shouldn't be dependent on government, right? So, like, you know, I, as an attorney, I, I represent people like, oh, I'm having this issue, I'm, I call the police. It's like, well, sometimes it's more valuable to try and work something out without calling the police to get that authority involved or without going to court to get the judge to referee the situation. That, you know, sometimes, and I guess this is from a transformative justice perspective, we need to figure out how to get along without needing that government involved in our daily lives. And there's other events that we know are gonna happen, we just don't know when, like the major cascade seduction, Cascadia seductions on earthquake and tsunami, where the government that we're gonna want to rescue us is itself gonna be a victim. I mean, the Coast Guard's not saving anyone, right? The Coast Guard's gonna need saving. So, so we're in the situation where we need to be able to work with our neighbors, work with our community and say, you know, we're gonna be the ones responsible for taking care of ourselves because the government's not gonna be there. I mean, what city employee is gonna come to work the day after the earthquake?
Public Works.
Public Works.
They'll be there, there'll be staffing.
Public Works will be, yeah, Public Works will be slowly clearing the utility lines from the streets, trying to get to the center of town. And, yeah.
I just wanna, I just kinda wanna jump into, I mean, the, the crunch that the city's facing, okay, is the loss of sales tax revenue, especially as NIP on, okay, over the past nine years, okay, has basically gone to, you know, defunct, okay? They no longer consume resources that they used to, which provided a lot of discretionary income, relatively discretionary income, for the city to engage in, you know, proactive policies. And I just, you know, I guess part of this now is the coalition and how do you prioritize, okay, given more limited means? And until we can grow the economy, create more consumption that, you know, theoretically will generate additional taxable revenue that can go into the general fund to pay for policy programs like, you know, heroin addiction, okay? Other than just the bare-bones survival, okay, of like medic one, the fire department, the police department, utilities are gonna take care of themselves. But once again, because consumption has decreased from the historic days, it's not giving a lot of more general fund taxes, okay, that once again pays for discretionary programs, which means that coalitions, okay, prioritizing becomes even more important. You know, it's just, it's a comment and, you know, how would you, you know, once again, we come back to the coalition, and how would you work with new council coming up, say in January, if you're elected, to better prioritize or re-rack the priorities that the city's already established?
Yeah. So, the city went through a process a couple of years ago of saying, we have $150 million of debt, we, we need to pay that off, we need to cut these, these things that we've been funding and, hey, we're not giving that $2,000 away, we're not giving that away, we're not doing this, we're not doing that. And trying to streamline what the city is. And, you know, the city manager says, we can't be everything to everyone. And that's, that's where the city's at. So, any proposal that anyone brings forward is, you know, either gonna be, need to be revenue neutral or need to be able to find some way of generating its funds without tapping on the reserves that the city just doesn't have, right? So, this is, this is the basis of the question. And so, for me, it's, it's, it's a question of, well, when we, when we say we're not gonna do something, are we really creating that savings as a government and as a community? So, for example, somebody who's homeless and addicted to heroin is going to the emergency room because they don't have a choice on where to go, when to seek help and what to do. And the ER doctors will have stories about people going in for things that, gosh, if they could just wait till 8:00 AM and go to clinic here instead, like, it would be a lot better. And each emergency room visit is what? Minimum.
Several hundred.
Several hundred?
Five hundred.
Five thousand.
Or maybe thousands.
Yeah, so thousands of dollars on an ER visit, just to get in and out the door, even if it was just a Band-Aid, right? So, and who pays for that?
We don't really.
Right, yeah. That person who's homeless is not paying for that. And it's a good reason, it's good that they can get medical care. But as a community, we're paying a lot for people. City of Seattle, I believe, said, hey, let's look at the people who are costing the ER the most and figure out who those people are and figure out if we can get them in housing, under the theory that housing people means that they're not gonna be in a crisis situation when every little thing goes wrong and thus they're not gonna have to rely on public services that ultimately we're all paying for. And those policies are generally referred to as housing-first policies. I think, my argument would be, and we have to crunch the numbers, of course, that those policies save us money in the long run because somebody who might be racking up $80,000 of medical bills a year that they're not paying and we're collectively paying for- for, could be housed for less than ten thousand dollars a year. So is there really savings there in starting a new program? You know, absolutely, we have to do the numbers on it.
Lifecycle costing versus first cost analysis.
Yeah. So, so for example, we're thinking about paving streets, but yet the pipes under the streets, the sewer pipes and water mains are breaking left and right. Are we doing stuff in the right order? Well, we wanna pave the street, oh, now we're gonna have to cut it later and, and, you know, fix the pipes.
And you can't, you know, dictate when the failing infrastructure's gonna break. I mean, this is, you're exactly right, you know? When they did the CSO project, I mean, they just paved that area of, of like, front and first, okay? And then, you know, it's like, the next week, I mean, they had to dig it up because, you know, infrastructure failed because it was well past its anticipated.
Well, we know the infrastructure's well past its anticipated deadline. And so, you know, can we say, well, what about, what are the critical infrastructure that is worth preventatively repairing, if we even have the money to do that? Or, you know, whatnot? And, I mean, do we really wanna pave all the alleys if we're gonna be ripping them up to replace sewers? Or are gravel alleys okay? You know, and I think in the long run, we have to ask, well, what is the, what is the infrastructure that we can sustainably maintain as a city? And this gets, I guess, pretty controversial to say, maybe we've, we have too much infrastructure to be able to maintain in the long run. There's a book that I just checked off in the library, and I haven't really started, but it's called The Rise and Fall of American Growth. And it's an economist looking at US standard of living from the Civil War until today. And his argument is, it peaked in the nineteen seventies, and it's not coming back, right? So we have an infrastructure that was built under a set of economic conditions that we're not gonna get back to.
But just once again, I mean, back in the seventies, we weren't amortizing, or take, you know, the environmental factors, for example. I mean, the economy, you know, I was selling, I was like sixteen years old, selling gas for twenty-three cents a gallon, okay? Because they were putting the straw into Saudi Arabia, okay? And the cost of pumping and transporting, I mean, the air pollution, okay? The Cuyahoga River would catch on fire, all these kinds of things, okay? Once again, have, you know, changed the equation that, you know, gave my parents and your grandparents the ability to buy a house for fifteen or twenty thousand dollars, okay? And for, you know, for some of us to get a college application without owing hundreds of thousands of dollars in debt. You know, so it's, you know, economists know the price of everything, but the value of nothing, I think that's an Oscar Wilde quote.
So, excuse me, Fred Ruppelso, but this is the open Q and A session, so please ask. I think Ron has a question over there. Ron?
You know, I read that about one of these syllables the other day, and this asbestos concrete thing jumped on me. So I researched that a little bit, and I guess most cities that have, that have asbestos concrete have been water mains, have been repairing, have been replacing them over the last fifteen years, or a year. Does the city have a really big problem there that they could ignore?
Technically, okay, they had a problem. Because from the accounting perspective, they would take depreciation, okay, on the asset. So let's just say it's a fifty-year pipeline. They would depreciate it in a straight line. But there was never any pot of money, okay, that the, you know, that the renewal and replacement fund, okay, that if I deduct five dollars in depreciation, then I put five dollars in the renewal and replacement fund. So at the end of the lifecycle of that water main, that they had a pot of money that they could go to. And that would mean when things failed, or they needed to do a new project, that they went to the bonds. Well, once again, we got caught in the credit crunch, okay? They couldn't issue no more new bonds. So everything had to be paid for either out of rates, okay? Well, out of rates. But now there is a small accrual fund, okay, that you could call the renewals and replacement fund, that this now is like gonna be the third year that, you know, starting to accumulate, okay, some money so that proactive, okay, we do decide to pave the alley, we can take, theoretically, take a look and determine whether some infrastructure needs to be replaced prior to that repaving. But I like the idea of gravel, you know? Because given the, you know, as long as it's maintained, it should be easier to maintain. And, you know, when the pothole happens, well, you throw some more gravel in it, rather than, you know, you know, those kinds of things. But I mean, just, you know, once again, how is this gonna flange together? You know, it's, you know?
How many miles of asbestos concrete water mains does the city have?
This could be found out, okay? Call the water department, call Craig Fulton, okay? You can get an answer, Director of Public Works and Utilities.
At every city council meeting that, I think almost every city council meeting I've been at over the last three months, which is all the one of them, there's been a question, well, there's, you know, the staff presents, hey, we need to buy this new truck, or replace this new server hardware, or replace this software, or replace this road. And the staff asks, like, did we anticipate this? Like, did we know about this? Like, how long, and then, how long do we expect this new software system to last? And, you know, you're like, hey, well, okay, if we haven't been doing that advanced planning before, let's start doing it now. Like, how long do we expect this to last? And they're not getting great answers. No offense to the staff, but they need to be able to say, yeah, we expect the software system to last for five years. Okay, so we need to be ready to spend fifty thousand dollars in five years, which means we need to be saving ten thousand dollars a year for this. And that's the sort of thing that you can do if you have the money you set aside. But we don't have the money to set aside. Instead, what we've been doing is doing a system where, well, when we need to make a large investment, let's take out a big loan and put in the investment. And the theory there is, well, then the people who are benefiting from that investment are the ones who are paying back the loan, right? So we all now benefit from the CSO project, so we're the ones who should pay back the expensive building. The other way to do it would be to say, well, let's pay it forward and, you know, pay for money we have now for the investments into the city that we care about into the future. And that way, we're not paying a bank a bunch of interest in order to then be able to pull that back. I think the city pays, is it two to four percent of its total revenue on interest on loans? Or maybe that's on paying off the loans? So that's a little high on the interest rate. But, you know, we're losing money by, by taking money out that we don't already have. So, you know, for me, like, personally, I like to spend money I have and not take out a loan, even if we wanna renovate the bathroom, let's save up and do that later. I think it'd be ideal if the city does that, but I don't see the city in a position financially where I can do that. So that's kind of this challenge of, well, we could save money if we have the ability to proactively replace the water mains under the street that we're about to pave. But if we don't have that extra money, we're just gonna kind of pave it and then tear it up later, and it's gonna cost us all more later on.
Well, then, I'm thinking there's, there's surprises that come from the community. For example, the Performing Arts Center. So a bunch of people who were never elected to anything now are involved in planning a big thing for our city. And that now you get to deal with as officials, either the staff or the elected officials. So how is that gonna, you know, it's stuff that the city didn't ever plan on before?
Yeah, I mean, the Planning Arts Center is still like, an unprecedented gift, is my understanding. And so, like, we shouldn't expect that to happen all that often. But it also looks like it's now basically a project that has been an ideal for at least thirty years. I mean, as long as I remember, like, there's been an idea of having a conference center at that site on Oak.
Sure, but I just mean, there's gonna be infrastructure cost and stuff that isn't on the budget now. Or even, say, a company wants to come and needs some infrastructure that hasn't been planned for. And so there, you never can plan for all the.
No, yeah. Yeah, so you can't plan for it all, but if it's something that's gonna be beneficial, then let's figure out how to make it work. I mean, there is a revenue, or there is a reserve, and, you know, that reserve is being taxed this year, for example, as NIPON transitions to Biopel. And, you know, the city is losing some of that, I think it's mostly utility revenue.
And then, secondly, what's your impression as far as what the level of tax, taxation, city gets, sales tax and, and what other kinds of?
Property tax. What, what, theorists like to say dumb taxes, right? I mean, we're stuck with the taxes that, sales tax hurts, you know, poor people pay proportionally more of their total income with sales tax than more affluent people. So it's considered a regressive tax. Property tax, you know, people who are on fixed income are still paying that large amount. I think there's a bit of an exception, if you're able to make it work. But generally speaking, that's gonna be a fixed amount, no matter what your income rate is. So we don't get, and we in Washington State just generally like decide that we don't wanna do smart taxes, like, you know, income taxes, they're the more progressive tax. But even with income tax, we're taxing something that we should think of as a good, you know, which is, we, we want people to have more income, we think that that's generally something that's positive. So, you know, why are we taxing it? Because when you tax something, in theory, you diminish the incentive to make more of it.
What they're gonna spread that money out on.
So, you know, what we should do is tax the things we don't want, and not tax the things we do want, or maybe even go further and subsidize the things we do want. So that's one way that government can shape how that, you know, the landscape is for businesses. But often, cities aren't allowed to do that sort of thing, or we're afraid to do it because, you know, people are like, well, you know, with the city shouldn't be getting in the business of controlling how much people pay for carbonated beverages, or that sort of thing. You know, where we might have the authority to do it, but there might be resistance to it because it's too involved in people's daily lives.
It seems to be Port Angeles has a large stock of unoccupied housing, and somehow, it's not necessarily derelict or irreparable, but it seems that for whatever reason, probably it's the owner was repossessed and it's held by the mortgage holder or somebody. There's just a lot of vacant housing. I wonder what tools the city has to take charge of that? If it's, if it's in bad condition, have it torn down, have it put to some other use or refurbished and become part of the rental market? I wonder if the, like, the city could do that through a domain, or what sort of other authority could be created to manage that property if the city does take it over? Because some neighborhoods are really quite mited.
And there's, there's a, this empty building thing creates a problem for the adjacent neighbors, whether it's the neighborhood or for businesses. Like, having an empty storefront next to your business can be detrimental. And in some places, like malls and areas where it's been unsuccessful, and like, there's half of the spaces in the malls are vacant, some of the stores have started to, like, fill the windows of the, of the vacant buildings. And even just filling the windows creates a better economic outcome for the businesses that are still there. So, you know, that's an issue. I mean, some cities, like, I was reading Flint, Michigan, the main public works in Flint, Michigan right now is, is bulldozing these, these derelict houses. And I, you know, I remember going to a conference in Detroit about seven years ago, and people said, what we're experiencing in Detroit is what the rest of you all are gonna be facing. You know? And, you know, it's bad in Detroit, in Flint, in other parts of the, you know, appropriately called Rust Belt. So how do we look at that and say, well, that's what happens unless we choose to do things differently? And so, yeah, there's a lot of tools the city could use. Do we have the political will to use them? Yeah.
And I'm not a resident of Port Angeles, okay? I'll, I'll be honest about that, okay? Anyway, when I was a child, I was raised in Palm Bay, okay? And you touched on something a few minutes ago about, you know, the logging industry just, it's defunct, okay? Basically, it really is, you know? Where I grew up, we had not only logging, we also had tourism, a lot of tourism. My family used to own a restaurant out in Palm Bay, okay? What I wanna know is, what has happened to the tourism in Port Angeles and Squim? It's, it's, I don't see it anymore. I really honestly don't. I really wished you could promote it a little bit more. There's thousands, I mean, I shouldn't say thousands, there's money when people come here. We want them to come and then go, okay? You know, no, really. And I miss that, I really do. I, I miss the tourists that we used to get here. I really do, in Palm Bay and CQ. And when we came to Port Angeles, there was always people walking around, you know, and it's, it's just not viable anymore, or something. And when I first moved back here, we lived in Arizona, and when we first moved back here, I was, got the impression from several people that Port Angeles and Squim have turned into a bedroom community for Seattle. And you just kind of touched on it a little bit, which is really, really unfortunate. And I don't know what to do about that, but I just wish we could get the tourism back. I really do. We have, we live in the most beautiful area in the world, and I've lived all over the world, okay? And in several different states. So I know what I'm talking about as far as the beauty that we have here, and our resources that we have here. I just think we're neglecting them. I'm sorry, I, I just really do. And I know it would help if the infrastructure, if we had more people coming in and, and just dropping their money off and then leaving, okay?
That's part of the city's theory in looking at increasing the sales tax to pay for roads is, well, sales tax is not just city residents who pay it, but, you know, somebody who comes in from County, buys stuff in Port Angeles, they're paying that. People who are here as visitors, mostly over the summer, are paying that. And so that's part of the theory with the sales tax for, for the roads, is it's not just city residents. And then somebody who's not in the city, like, what the city chooses to do affects you a lot, because it is the place where you come for a lot of economic transactions, either that or Squim, and then you pay for the roads in Squim. I haven't looked at the stats of how tourism has changed, like, over the last several decades, like a decadal study, but there is a, tourism is still a very strong sector in our economy. You go up to Hurricane Ridge in the summer, and, you know, you'll see where the tourists are. But, you know, one thing, Nathan West says this about the tourism industry in Port Angeles, he, he says that the, you know, the product isn't as good as it should be.
Yes, absolutely.
And I think he's right, that, you know, in, one example he uses is, in the winter, the hotels don't drop their prices. And to him, that doesn't make sense, that, you know, the hotels are charging two hundred dollars a night in the winter when it's raining and the park is more or less completely closed, except Friday, Saturday, Sunday, hopefully. And so, you know, we, we do have this issue where so much of the tourism on the peninsula is, is dependent on Olympic National Park. And the park is, you know, maybe next week, gonna shut down, not like Hurricane Ridge is open all month anyway. But, you know, so much of Port Angeles is, is that relationship. I feel like, when I was a kid, I was reading a, like, travel book about the peninsula, and it was like, there's this whole section on the Olympic Peninsula, pages on Port Townsend, and then you get to Port Angeles, and it's like, Port Angeles is a mud hole on your way to the rainforest.
Absolutely.
And, you know?
That's really sad.
Yeah.
Honestly. Yeah, I, I, I just, I think more could be done. Port Angeles and Squim should be destinations for people, not just Port Townsend. Port Townsend takes care of themselves. I mean, it doesn't make any difference what day of the week, what the weather's like. There are tourists there all the time. We don't see it here, which is really unfortunate. We have to do something.
The city spends quite a bit of money, you know, like in January, sixteen thousand dollars to an ad agency to promote tourism in Port Angeles. And that's just one aspect of it. So it's not for lack of promoting tourism, there's, you know, I think just like, for example, the, the housing homeless issue, there's, there's a complex. You know, my, my spouse is a tour guide, she started her own business, she leads people on day hikes in the park. She came in four years ago, when we moved back to Port Angeles the second time, and there was one other person doing that. Now there's four or five people doing that, separate businesses, plus the whale watch. And so there's much more of a guided tourism option here. And that increase hasn't affected her business. It's not like, oh, no, there's no competitors and she's not able to make ends meet. It's like, no, there's, especially in the summer, there is a market. The question is, what do you do the other half of the year?
Yeah, that's, that's a problem. We've gotta do the other part of the year besides those three months where we have good weather here. I mean, there's so much to do, even in the wintertime here.
If not, I, Lindsay, I would really like to thank you for.
Oh, yes.
Being willing to be the first participant, you know? Sort of. So from your viewpoint, how, how was this for you? Both in terms of the process, but also how will it be for your election?
Yeah, so, you know, we're at the stage where filing week is May fifteenth to nineteenth. So that's the week when we're gonna see who comes out of the woodwork and files for different positions. Uh, one of my goals between now and then is that people who, uh, you know, maybe folks here would say, "Well, I don't wanna have to choose between Lindsay and that other person." We wanna make sure that other person doesn't run for position three that I'm planning on running for. So that was part of the reason for me declaring early and saying, "I'm running for position three." And that I want, at minimum, people to know that that's my intent. So if there's somebody else with perhaps similar values, that they're not gonna run for the same position. So that's, that's one thing. I think, you know, another thing is, um, if you see something, whether it's, you know, comment section of the Peninsula Daily News, or maybe a PBN article itself, although I should catch that, Facebook posts, Twitter posts, something that I should respond to, please send me an email and say, "Hey, saw this, here's the URL, you should respond to it." Because I don't necessarily catch anything in the way that a lot of social media stuff works. It's hard to see it unless you happen to be looking at it at that particular time. But please don't assume that I'm able to see that stuff in a timely way. So, um, somebody mentioned that, that there was a comment somewhere that, like, Lindsay voted for Trump, and it's like, "I can address that, but I need to find it, I don't know where that comment is on social media." It's not true.
I hope not.
Should be obvious.
Yeah, right.
What, what else? Uh, if, if you're more motivated than just those things, um, a really useful thing for candidates is if people are willing to host house parties. They can take one or both forms, just the meet and greet format, where you just get some friends together who I may not know, likely don't know, and it gives me a chance to have a gathering that's a small way to meet other people, because my main thing is meeting other people. Uh, there's the other format, which is a fundraiser, or you can do a combination of both. But don't feel like, if you're like, you know, "My friends aren't the kind who have a lot of money," don't feel like you have to make it a fundraiser, it can just be basically getting together with, with your friends. And I'd be happy to do that. What else? I think the other thing then is, is ultimately, it's gonna come down to votes in the end. So I'm assuming I'll have an, an opposing candidate running for position three. Uh, so, um, you know, basically, about five thousand people total will vote in the election. And so I need two thousand five hundred votes. I think, um, I, I'll get eight hundred to nine hundred, just because the number of people know me and they're gonna vote for me regardless of if I did anything between now and November. So then the remaining fourteen hundred or so votes are the ones that I need to go out and give. And so those are people I don't already know, and your help in, in making that happen would be, would be great. And then those are people who, you know, as we get into the summer and get closer to the fall, you know, for doorbelling and calling and that sort of active volunteer effort. So that'll be something we're ramping up later, but right now, not getting involved there. So the main thing right now is just spreading the word and talking to people. So it's, you know, it's good to meet you and have this opportunity, and thank you for having me.
Aren't you glad that you don't have to stand up there and defend yourself like most town hall meetings that we've watched on television? With our cards holding them up?
You can, I, I was, I was expecting to see some of that.
Oh, yeah.